I'd like to call an order. The Iredale County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2025. At this time, I would like to ask Vice Chair Neder to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Iredale County.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with praise and thanksgiving for our many blessings. Lord, with each day comes things we expect and we prepare for, but each day may also hold challenges, accidents, and situations we never saw coming. We ask for strength and wisdom and your guidance through all days to always keep our eyes focused and our ears open, so we may do the work and make the decisions to the best of our ability. May we always understand the importance of our role and how it impacts the people that live here. We are truly thankful for each member of this board, our staff, and our citizens. We ask that you watch over us, heal those who are hurting, embrace those who feel alone, and continue to guide us closer to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Stroud to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do, Chair Conley. We have a few adjustments. The first one is removal of item 8.4 from administrative matters. We'll bring that back at our next meeting. And then the other, we have some adjustments with closed session. So, we are removing attorney-client from closed session and adding property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, and adding personnel to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Follow on our agenda list tonight. We do not have any presentation or special awards. We do not have an appointment before the board, but we do have three public hearings for tonight, and I'll turn it over to the county manager when we can kick off number one.
Thank you, Chair Conley. Mr. Todd is here, and he's going to walk us through the three different rezonings. The first one is a rezoning request of approximately .296 acres at the corner of Old Mountain Road and the I-40 interchange.
Good evening to the board. The first rezoning we have before us tonight is outlined in blue on the screen, currently zoned residential agriculture. And you can see to the south, it's zoned highway business. The applicant has recently purchased that triangle piece, so this rezoning is looking to square up the rezoning line with that HB and RA. They bought that triangle from the neighboring property. It's an existing business, and staff does support this request because it lies entirely within the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation. The property is highly accessible to the interstate. The property is in close proximity to various existing commercial uses, and this would amend a split zone property so that it may be utilized to its full potential. Just showing the 2045 plan, everything in that area corridor commercial. Again, an existing business for predominantly the HB part and looking to add this small triangle. Planning Board also voted unanimously to support this request, and there was no opposition at Planning Board. Few pictures of the property looking north on Old Mountain away from the interstate. Property is on our left, looking back toward the interchange, looking directly across. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Matthew, the one piece that's up north of there, are they the ones that sold them, the property?
Yes, directly north, yes.
So, they obviously don't have a problem with it?
Correct.
Sold on to Troy's. It was his daughter's property.
Oh.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Todd?
Uh-uh.
The applicant here want to speak or anything?
We have not moved applicants here.
Okay.
For this one.
We will open, I will open up the public comment period, I'm sorry, public hearing to consider a request from landowners, applicants Gene Madison and Michael Fox of FNN Leasing LLC to rezone approximately .296 on an acre at the corner of Old Mountain Road and the I-40 interchange. And I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment, make a finding that said approval is consistent with 2045 Horizon Plan and is also reasonable in the public interest because property lies entirely within the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation and is highly accessible to the interstate, is in close proximity to various existing commercial uses, and will amend a split zone property so they will be utilized to its full potential.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And then county manager, our second one, can we kick it off?
Mr. Todd also has the next one, and that's a public hearing to consider a request from landowner applicant Melody Henson of Precision Outdoor Storage LLC to rezonate approximately five acres along Lynnwood Road.
Yes, this request again is outlined in blue on the screen, currently zoned residential agriculture. This property started as a home-based business essentially, and over the years has expanded and grown. And this rezoning would allow them to continue to expand, meet the requirements for a commercial property, and it is a conditional request. So, there was a public, not a public hearing, but a public meeting held at the fire department, and only people in support of the request showed up, so they did express their support at that. Planning Board also recommended unanimously to support this request, and staff is also supporting this request. The property is within close proximity to other existing non-residential uses. The conditions of the request permit it HB uses limited to mini warehouse self-storage facility only, and they aim to initiate zoning compliance while maintaining safeguards for the surrounding landowners, and traffic impact should be minimal. This is the 2045 land use plan showing that area is low density residential. This is an aerial of the property. Toward the front or Lynnwood Road, you'll see a single-family house, and the rest are storage units and/or trailers for storage, or storage of trailers, boats. A few pictures of the site. Looking kind of across from the site, and looking back north. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant here is here on this request.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors? I think you said nobody showed up, but where that's at, I know it's been there for years. Is there any need for any buffering? I know it goes right there to the roadway. It's in a residential area, but I know they've been using it for years that way.
So, there's, because of the way that it's grown and expanded, there will be areas, especially on the front portion, that they'll need to address screening and buffering to make sure that it meets the current code. Some of the use toward the back, it's been there long enough, it wouldn't be required to have buffering and screening, so it's a little bit of a mix. But again, we didn't hear from any neighbors with concern with buffering and screening.
I know they want to get along with their neighbors. I just didn't know if the current code required us to put any additional conditions on there or if you'd heard any requests like that.
No requests, but the code does require some additional screening out there, yes.
Any other questions? And you said the applicant is here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll open up the public hearing to consider the request from landowner applicant Melody Henson of Precision Outdoor Storage LLC to rezonate approximately five acres along Lynnwood Road. Public hearing is open, and we have Melody Henson that's signed up to speak. If you will, just state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Melody Henson. I'm owner, operator, and applicant of Precision Outdoor Storage, 680 Lynnwood Road in Mordsville. I was approached to rezonate, and I'm complying with everything that I need to do. We've been a family business since 1972. My father, Ray Henson, was a veteran and a retired volunteer fireman, and began this business as a body shop and converted it over to storage in 2007. I came on board three years ago. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also have my attorney here if he needs to answer any questions as well.
I'm good.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Hearing none, the seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and 2045 plan amendment, and to make a finding that said approval is inconsistent with the adopted 2045 Horizon Plan, but is reasonable and in the public interest because the site lies within a close proximity to other existing non-residential uses. Conditions of the request aim to initiate zoning compliance while maintaining safeguards for the surrounding landowners, and traffic impact should be minimal.
Motion by Commissioner Hal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And then our third one for tonight, if you want to kick it off.
Absolutely. One more public hearing for this evening, and this is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of approximately 12.92 acres along Flowerhouse Loop. Mr. Todd?
Yes, this request again is outlined in blue on the screen. It's four different parcels along Flowerhouse Loop, currently zoned residential agriculture, and the request is a straight general business request. Staff does support this request based on the following. The property lies entirely within the 2045 Horizon Plan corridor commercial designation. The properties are in close proximity to various existing commercial uses, and the properties are highly accessible to major thoroughfares. Planning Board voted unanimously to deny this request with mostly the concern being the general business request. I think the Planning Board felt more comfortable maybe if it was a conditional request and/or potentially a neighborhood business-type zoning district. This is the 2045 Horizon Plan showing corridor commercial, kind of in that darker pink color on the screen. And after Planning Board's recommendation, we looked back through kind of the history in this area, and this area was identified for commercial going back to at least 2001 with what was the Exit 42 Small Area Plan, with Flowerhouse Loop being essentially the southern border for that commercial designation, future designation, so that'd be kind of the cutoff with that plan. And with the 2030 Horizon Plan that we often reference for years, it also furthered that as far as corridor commercial, and then the most recent 2045 Horizon Plan still identifies it as corridor commercial. This is an aerial of the property. There is a single-family house on the property, and then the rest is vacant wooded or open land. A few pictures of the property, and if developed, there would be some buffering and screening requirements, particularly along Flowerhouse Road. There'd be a 15-foot yardway road, which would be trees and shrubs planted along the roadway. And then also along the sides and back, there'd be potential for additional plantings or fencing, depending on the specific use that developed. A few pictures of the current site. Looking toward the west, this is on the western edge of the property. It's on our right. And looking back toward 21. And looking directly across. And the applicant is here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, it is within the 2045 plan and the 2030 plan, but the reason the Planning Board didn't like it is because they don't know specifically what is proposed to go there? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know about specifics, other than the general business is going to allow a higher intense use, commercial use, than a neighborhood business would use or neighborhood business would potentially allow. So, I think that was part of the process. And it does, it gets tough when you start talking about neighborhood business versus GB, because you could have a neighborhood business that's producing more traffic than a general business use. So, the impacts, just saying one zoning district versus the other, it's pretty hard to compare on a straight rezoning request.
That area of Troutman's approved a lot of residential stuff in there too, right?
It is, and you can see on the image there, to the north of the site, all the residential development that's occurred in Troutman. Even though Troutman's zoning designation for that is a commercial designation, it still ended up with residential development.
Did y'all have opposition at the Planning Board meeting? I think you said there was.
There was some opposition, I think mostly from across the road and maybe adjacent to the property too.
Okay.
And they have city sewer and water right back at the back, right?
Yes, I don't know exactly how close, but yeah, those properties along the back side or the north side have city services.
You know, if it's out front with the HB, that's Troutman City Limits also, I believe.
Yeah, the HB, the Crosshatch, the Long Skinny property, I think, is where the ABC store is going. And I don't believe anything's proposed yet for the corner piece, it's HB, but that is both Troutman.
So, was the opposition more for the traffic, or was it specific, the opposition of what the neighbors didn't like, or?
I think it was a combination of things. I do know the opposition, I believe some of those members are here, so they might could further explain it. But I think it was a mixture of concerns.
Okay. I didn't see the sign-up sheet, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Todd? Do we have a public hearing?
Not yet.
I will open the public hearing to consider requests from landowners Andrew and Christie Phillips, represented by applicant Eric Thompson of Equity Commercial Properties to rezonate approximately 12.92 acres along Flowerhouse Loop. Our first person to sign up for this is Mr. Eric Thompson.
Shall we ask if the applicant would like to speak prior to, to get any more information from?
Yeah, if that's.
That's Eric.
Okay. Because I'd like to, maybe they could give the lay of the land and plans, that way we can have the whole, but yeah, definitely want to hear from the citizens.
And that is Mr. Thompson, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But the public hearing is open, and we're just asking the applicant to speak first.
Eric, you'll just have to scroll through.
Okay.
Eric Thompson with Equity Commercial Properties. I'm going to go through some slides. We'll start with property history and location. The owner purchased Andy Phillips. He's here tonight. He purchased around 2005 for investment. When you look at Flowerhouse Loop, it does have a lighted intersection on the Highway 21, both ends of it. The goal or intent would be to subdivide with the county to two to four acre lots will be our goal for office, flex, warehouse-type use. If you look at this area shaded in yellow, that would be currently zoned commercially, properties on Flowerhouse Loop. 91 of those acres are GB zoning currently. When you look at intersection, this is going to be a realignment with Houston Road. They're staging that now. This end down at the, be the southern end, it does have a lighted intersection already or signalized. Looking at businesses on the Flowerhouse Loop, you've got Cube Smart Storage, The Lumber Company, Premier Boat and RV, Frito Lay, and they range from the square foot of 12,000 to 62,000 square feet. It's a good case study, if you ask me, on, you know, what good planning does. This was, like Matthew said, in the multiple plans, and it's filled in, and I think we have good uses along that road because of good planning. This top picture on the left was a GB product that we did recently on Flowerhouse Loop. This would be Frito Lay Distribution. That would be the 60,000 Cube Smart, and this is The Lumber Company. It sits on 40 acres of GB there. When you get into the land development code, we use this a lot when working with clients because this is where it starts, what use goes there and why. GB definition is located along major radial highways. I think you can see pretty well the location where it jumps over 77 and connects back to Highway 21. It's two miles long. When you do look at requirements, we would be going through subdivision, site plan, showing landscaping, any signage, parking. Pretty much your typical 10 to 15 checklist items to develop. So, those are all in the county's code. It does fit the 25 Horizon Plan. I think our, after attending the meetings of that plan, it was protect the interstates for commercial uses. This is what staff can support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So, right now, your goal, Eric, would be, did you say to subdivide it into four acre, like three, four acre lots, because it's what, 12, almost 13 acres?
Correct. I think the road frontage allows for probably three to four, depending on how it's subdivided on that.
And potentially similar development as to what you pictured that's already there?
Correct. Yeah, I think the most recent would be similar warehouse ideas of like these. These were smaller lots, they were on like half acre, so very likely they're going to be a little bit larger lots. That building's probably in the 8,000 to 10,000 range right now.
So, when y'all were at the public hearing at the Planning Board, were the concerns from neighbors or whoever was there, were their concerns more of a traffic impact or aesthetics or what was?
You know, I think it's something I deal in every day, so I think to know the benefits of a commercial use over townhomes or something else that would go on that product or, you know, I think you're.
What would be allowed right now by law?
We went with, against the idea of going in that Smith Village development because we personally advised Andy that it would be a better, higher best use to go commercial buildings over more housing. So, we're a big advocate for that.
If that property was not divided down, because that's just an option to be correct, how large, Matthew Todd, this might be a conversation or a question for you? Either one of you can answer this, and what size warehouse would be allowable on that if it was not subdivided down?
Now, the owner's intent will be to subdivide. If you go larger, your price is probably not going to reflect what that property should do. I don't think a company will, they'll normally have to fit in a heavy industrial to get a larger business there, just in that location in general. I think they're going to be more suited in a business park if they're looking for a 12.
Right, but with that being said, we'll look at a rezoning that will be attached to that piece of property.
Correct.
Moving forward forever, so got to look at all the pieces of that, so.
And I think the, it's hard for, we didn't get a subdivision, it hadn't done that because you hate to spend money on surveying until you get through this step, because then we go into the, you know, watershed floodplain stuff, we have to start paying, I guess, from that side.
But this time, the goal is to make it more appealing to sell, is that what?
Correct.
Because you don't have a buyer at this time.
Yes.
So, we're looking at a rezoning of a piece of property, and you were looking for, let me refresh myself here. Going to general business versus the neighborhood business? Okay. That's all I had for now.
Any other more questions?
Well, with general business, you can still do townhomes, apartments, right?
You would have to annex in probably and get sewer and water.
That's why, I bet it's, that's why I asked how close sewer and water was, because it's close.
It's pretty close. They're trying to get it up to the corner there now, yeah, for the ABC store for Troutman.
We're trying to hold back people moving here, so.
So, if that was approved, you'd basically be the tellend of what's already general business.
We would be the blue, correct?
Yeah.
And this property here is for sale. They're looking for the similar idea, they would be looking for a similar tenant. You know, I think what we get is the office is a lot of, we have nowhere to take anybody to put their business. Business parks are hard to develop. You can watch them on Old Murdoch Road. It's just a struggle of cost, so when you do have opportunity of road frontage, cutting lots, and given an option for, usually it's a community member wanting to have his business located close. So, I really see this as, again, a good case study of good planning. This was.
Parts are good. I mean, they don't cause traffic problem, and they, you know, we bring in tax money and we don't pay out for schools. It's these apartments that are killing us. I mean, and it's, you're close to city sewer and water there, so that scares me.
And that would be taxable revenue currently on Flowerhouse Loop, so you're looking probably in 800 to 900,000 it's bringing in for the county right now. It's pretty impressive. I didn't know it until you start digging into these properties, but it's, again, a lot of them don't have all improvements on them either, from what I've seen.
Anything else?
Uh-uh, no.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Next person to sign up, and I don't want to mess this name up, I can't read the writing much, Cat Hacker? Am I wrong on that? If I'm wrong, when you come up, just state your name and address.
They get a chance to state the name anyway, yeah.
Nobody can read mine either, so trust me. Your name and address, please.
Kathy Halder, 523 Flowerhouse Loop. Hello. I want to clarify one thing. They keep showing you all that storage. It's way on the other side of 77 Bridge. It's not where we are. All those storage units and all that other commercial stuff they put in, the Frito Lay and everything, we have 10, 12, 13 houses that are all together, and that land is in the middle, and behind that is where Smiths Village is, which is all the houses and townhomes and everything else. So, this is not just plain property, that there's nothing around, there's no houses. We bought our house in 2020. It was residential agricultural, and when I read everything about Troutman, it says a small, quaint town or whatever it is, there was nothing listed anywhere that I found, and believe me, I do research, that said anything about anything going commercial whatsoever around there, or we would have never bought that property. It's, I get a family business, and our neighbor has a dog cabin. You cannot see it from the road. It looks like a house and a garage, and you go all the way down the thing, you can't see it at all. The traffic is just like any other time going up and down Flowerhouse Loop, there's nothing going on. It is not the same thing. And at the advisory meeting, we all stated, you know, I don't care if it's a veterinarian that goes in or a barber shop, I can't really think of other stuff, but it's just that, for that, to take up that land in the middle of all these houses, and I'm not even talking about on Rankin Hill that have been there forever, and most of the people around us are old, but all their grandkids and kids live in their houses, like they're not, you know, like a single, ours doesn't, but most people around us, they have generations living in their house. So, I just want you to put yourself in our shoes and maybe take it down a notch. Just family business, if you want to do it, that's fine. I know he has a right to make money off of the land, I get it, but try to take some consideration in for the people that have been here and, you know, even years longer. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone, anyone else here would like to speak on this matter? You can come on up. Just state your name and your address when you come up, please.
Christine Smith. Can we go back a picture?
Let me, let me try it here.
Nope, keep going.
Can you state your address, please, ma'am?
Oh, 520 Flowerhouse Loop. The map of, no, keep going. Keep going. I don't know where it went. It was the whole map when you had all yellow.
Yeah, that was the applicant's map.
There. So there, see all that yellow up there and that red, that's for sale? That's all your business. Once you go over 77, this is all housing. My house is there, her house is there, family houses are all right here, and then you've got Smith Village right behind it. There's no way that that, that street is, oh, sorry, there's no way that that street is gonna, if you put a business there, it's no way that it's gonna have enough traffic for that, our street is not built for a business. There's not enough, I don't know, understand about what the water situation is, but there's not enough, whatever, the sewage and water and the traffic there already because when 77 gets built up, backed up, they go through our street, they go through the thing around the loop into that housing complex, they go around the loop, they make the right onto Flowerhouse Loop, and then they go on 150. We have enough traffic on there. I don't know, has anybody been on Flowerhouse Loop? I don't know if you've ever been on Flowerhouse Loop. Where they're saying is, we, I live there, I, that's our housing, all on the other side. You can't even, if you go down, pass all those yellow stuff to try to make a left onto 21, forget about it. That's what New Yorkers think, forget about it because you can't make a left on there because there's no traffic light right by Hudson. We don't have the streets. Most of Troutman's like that. But we have houses right here, all these are houses with families and kids. If you put a, a storage unit, I don't know if any one of you would, if any one of you would like a storage unit right next door to you. I know it's about money. I know we all here for money. But I put, we put our earned, earned money into, we work, we can't even retire, me and my husband can't even retire, I don't know if you're at the retirement age, you can't retire. And then you're gonna, we, we bought our house, we saved our house, there's, you can't, the traffic would not hold it just alone. Put it on the, buy that red piece of property, that's right next to, what you call it, a storage unit. That's all on that side. Keep our homes together, at least one little spot. You just did Smith Village, we're doing Full Lion over there. That whole area is going to be commercial, let that be commercial. Let that be commercial. We got, you've got enough space over there for commercial. We don't need it right next to, to our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here like to speak on this matter? Anybody got any comments?
If you've got a hand up if you want to-
Okay. Come on, you come on up. Just state your name and your address, please.
Shannon Bellinger, 564 Flowerhouse Loop. So me and my husband bought our house about five years ago, and we met all the neighbors when we did buy our house. We loved how, we are all a big family. I want to raise my family here. The traffic, as we were saying, it's going to be way too much. I picked this piece of property because I am set back a little bit, but I would be, I'm not afraid if my children go in the front yard, I won't be afraid if they run around the front yard. Now of all the traffic, you know, safety is a big issue. There are plenty, plenty of children in our little group of residential homes, and I just want it to still be safe and our family, what we are, to stay a family, and it just be safe for all of our children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews.
Okay. Can you state your name one more time for the record?
Shannon Bellinger.
Okay. Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here like to speak?
If you want to state your name and address, please.
Elena Smith, 552 Flowerhouse Loop. I'm the one that owns the dog boarding facility that's in the back of my property that can't be seen from the road. If this is zone GB, what does that do to the value of our property?
At this point, we want to hear from you, so we can address the questions afterwards.
Okay, well, that's one of my issues is, they've said all the other stuff, I don't need to repeat that again, I definitely agree with them, but also the value of our land will go down, I believe, after some research, if it is zone GB. It's another issue I wanted to bring up. My business, I've been in business for 21 years, very small business, take care of dogs. If y'all have any dogs, let me know. Traffic is just ridiculous anyway, so, but they brought that up, so that's all I wanted to add to that.
Good, thank you.
Get her phone.
Anybody else?
Anybody want to go to where else?
Board got any comments or anything?
Yeah, at this point, unless you have any other further questions for Matthew Todd.
I just, I just was going to ask Matthew, can you, our, our options right now are to approve, deny, or table, have conversations with applicant, potentially you guys, staff, about changing to either conditional request or whatever. You mentioned the options at 4 o'clock, so I just wanted to put that in the record at 6:00.
Sure. So with the unfavorable recommendation from planning board, it does kind of have to follow a certain part of the code. And what that, what that says is if the applicant was to withdraw it before a vote from you guys, they have to wait 180 days. They can resubmit if you guys think that a new application is substantially different from what they've submitted currently. But again, that's if the applicant was to withdraw it before a vote. If the applicant chooses to keep moving forward and you guys were to deny the request, then it has to wait two years before it could come back for the same request, and one year before it could come back as a different request. That's if it got voted down. And then, of course, you can always approve it, and then, I guess, if there was a desire to continue the meeting to gather more information, that's an option as well, so.
To give time to talk to the applicant and that kind of thing.
Well, with all that being said, I would like at this point to make a motion to continue the public hearing, to gather more information and to hear more, and then bring it back up on, or continue it until the June 17th meeting. That enables us to get more information. We've got a staff that said it falls in line, yet we've got a planning board that denied unanimously, we've got citizen concerns, there are options for the applicant, so I'd, I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing until June 17th to gather more information.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder to keep the public hearing open until June 17th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that all we need to do, Lisa?
That allows citizens to still contact the planning-
Yes.
Yeah, the planning department with, with concerns, correct?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make sure that it's clear to you all, I think that it is, or maybe to the members of the public, that you, you also have to consider all the uses that are possible in the GB district that's being requested because this is a conventional request.
That's correct.
So despite the representations of what the intent is, when you make this decision, you need to consider any of the uses in GB.
Correct, and that's what my-
That also gives the applicant time to have more conversations and consider their options without potentially-
Delaying it any-
Delaying it or doing anything for two years or whatever.
Yeah, too much to consider.
Remain open until June 17th, public hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matthew Todd. At this moment, I'd like to take a 10-minute break, please. We'll come back in 10 minutes.
Come on.
Give you a break.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1186.51] Thank you.